Okay, it's six o'clock, if you would please rise and Jeff Vaughn, would you please give your prayer?
Sure. Father, we come before you this evening and we thank you for your many blessings, thank you for the opportunity we have to come here to see city government in action, we ask that you be with the council in its words and deeds tonight and moving forward. May they be in the best interest of the city and help us all to use our talents to glorify you. Just bless us here this evening and again, be with the council, let the proper decisions be made now, in your name of prayer.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First of all, thank you Jeff for being our designated prayer tonight, appreciate that. Tina, could you go ahead and do the roll call?
Mayor Mike Dree.
Here.
City Attorney Darren Rice.
Here.
Alderman Julie Eccleberry.
Here.
Alderman Cody Atterbury.
Here.
Alderman Clifford Reaver.
Here.
Alderman Tyler Lampley.
Here.
Alderman Eugene McGill is absent. Alderman Jerry Lizzenby.
Here.
Alderman Terry Stahl.
Here.
Alderman Gary Moore.
Present.
Alright, we have a quorum, approval of the minutes, minutes of the March eighth meeting presented for approval, do I have a motion to approve?
I approve the minutes.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Alderman Stahl, seconded by Alderman Eccleberry to approve the minutes of the March eighth meeting. Roll call vote, Moore.
Yes.
Reaver.
Yes.
Stahl.
Yes.
Atterbury.
Yes.
Eccleberry.
Yes.
Lampley.
Yes.
Lizzenby.
Yes.
McGill is absent.
Okay, approval of bills, current bills have been presented to you for payment. Do I have a motion to approve that?
You might get a motion.
Second.
I have a motion by Alderman Reaver, seconded by Alderman Moore to pay the bills for this meeting, roll call vote, Reaver.
Yes.
Stahl.
Yes.
Atterbury.
Yes.
Eccleberry.
Yes.
Lampley.
Yes.
Lizzenby.
Yes.
McGill is absent. Moore.
Yes.
Okay, at this time in the meeting, we encourage public comments before the city council. If you would like to say something, please come up, give us your name, where you live, and you have three minutes to be able to share your thoughts. Are there, do we have anyone that would like to address the council?
I'm just gonna reiterate our request for a no vote on the sales tax.
Cindy, could I, Cindy Grimes?
Yeah, Cindy Grimes, Fairfield Produce, and a taxpayer in the county. And I would, I know that Mike said on the radio that it only takes four yes votes, but that's a huge responsibility for four people to raise taxes on everybody who spends money in Fairfield. So I'm just gonna ask you not to be one of those four people and vote no, and represent the thousands of people who don't want their taxes raised. And so I just respectfully ask for a no vote for the sales tax increase, thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Anyone else that would like to speak?
Hi, Doug Wilson, and I'm in favor of the sales tax. From listening to the consulting group that we've had in here in the past, if what they say is true, most of these dollars will be generated outside the business district. And I think that's something to consider. Another thing to consider, being back in Fairfield for twenty years and being gone for twenty years, I often hear Dana talking, and I'm not on Facebook, that things just kinda stand still in Fairfield a little bit, which in a way is good, and in some ways, it may not be so good. I also hear the pushback from the inflation, and I hear a little pushback from the gas, and this is the wrong time to raise the tax. But when I look at the tax, we're below some communities in this area that we're competing with. I'm not saying we're Mount Vernon, but I think we can bring the tax up a little bit and not adversely affect us terribly. And I would say, in a time of inflation and with these heavy gas prices, when is the right time to increase some taxes? The city needs dollars, and we need it in the business district, and we needed it yesterday. So, I'm asking for some consideration in this from a business standpoint of the future of Fairfield, of how we're looking out, not tomorrow, not next year, but twenty years from now. That's what I'm asking, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wanting to speak this evening? Name and address.
Marjorie Jordan, and I live north of Sisney, in Reinhardt, for exact. Last time I spoke to you as well as a county citizen, and that one that comes to Fairfield all the time. I also spoke to you as a prior coach, I failed to mention, I'm also a school teacher, that's my full-time job. But I represent tonight the business side of it, for Nicole's sake, for her farmer's daughter. She wanted me to speak, and bear with me, I'm a little more nervous tonight. I feel after the last time, there were some key things that, to be addressed, and that were discussed on. And I, what I've noticed the most, as well as, you know, I would hope that with all of your hearts, because I'm in support of the one percent, as is Nicole, and as well, thousands of others, that I'm sure that haven't been as vocal as what we have. I know that I've had a lot of people that have been in support, that haven't voted, voiced it to you guys. But, what I would hope is mostly, you know, you would put politics aside, that no matter who it is that your, is your mayor at the time, that you wouldn't be looking at this from a standpoint of that, but also a standpoint of the future of Fairfield, just like Doug had addressed as well, because that's where I'm looking at it from the mother side of the young business owner, is where is the future of Fairfield, and from what I've seen, you know, it's, it's not where it should be, it should have been before. And so some of the things that were talked about last time was addressing, you know, with Carter, whenever he discussed the one percent on his business and the amount that that would revenue, that that would, he would lose from that. So, some of you may not be familiar, because, I mean, in all due respect, how many of you guys as aldermen have been into our store in the four years that we've bought it? You know, so, I think it's a, a big deal for you to be able to come in and know what's uptown and ask, what do you need? And so, from that standpoint, you know, we had, we sell dresses that range anywhere from top dollar, twenty-five hundred dollars in our bridal gown, that go out our door, so on average, a two thousand dollar dress. And what a key point of that is, the one percent of that would be twenty dollars on that purchase for someone outside to add to that. They already paid the seven percent, and the majority of our customers purchase with a credit card or debit card. We have a Clover POS system, that has a four percent rate that needs to be charged them, and they don't bat an eye about it. Some other things as well, is they address fundraising, fundraising in town, people are fundraised to death, and, and I've also been a part of that with Live Well as well and stuff, and so it's hard to get, you get the same people over and over again. Some people mentioned, hey, there's TIP money available, I'm not sure that everyone's aware, but TIP has its limitations. This money does not have limitations, it goes before committing, it's not just decided by one person. And so, we need the future of Fairfield to be bright, we need to reach out for all the resources that are made available. And also, I would ask you as alderman, you guys have a tough job, I understand that, nobody wants to do it like coaching, right? What is your plan to help the town, the business owners, if you don't vote yes for this? What is your plan B? What are you going to do? Because we've had the money before, and we don't have it now, right? So, thank you, thank you very much.
Anyone else? Alright, hearing nobody else, let's move on with the meeting. Agenda item one is an agreement with the Illinois Department of Natural Resources for gas and water line easements. My understanding, and Tina helped me, or anyone else that would wanna help me, we have an ESMO that goes through Atkinson Forest, has for years, even prior to you being the clerk, which was a long time ago. Four hundred, yeah, four hundred and fifty dollars annually we spend on this easement. But I think that the concern was that it really hadn't come before the city council for a vote, it's an agreement, it's a a contract, and so the, the, the goal was, we really need to bring it before the city council.
And it is for a gas line and a water line.
Okay. So, what's your pleasure, gentlemen?
I make a motion, and we approve that?
I would second that.
I have a motion by Alderman Moore, seconded by Alderman Lampley to approve the agreement for IDNR for the gas and water line easements through Atkinson Forest. Roll call vote, Stahl.
Yes.
Atterbury.
Yes.
Eccleberry.
Yes.
Lampley.
Yes.
Lizzenby.
Yes.
McGill is absent, Moore.
Yes.
Reaver.
Yes.
Okay, passes. Agenda item two, an ordinance establishing the Fairfield Business District, approving a business district plan, authorizing the imposition and collection of a sales tax within such business district, and approving certain actions in connection with the establishment of such business district. What's your pleasure, gentlemen?
I would make the motion to bring this for a vote.
Mayor, I would like to make a motion that we table that.
I second that table.
Okay, so we had a motion on the floor, go ahead.
Right, really, if, if we're going to move to this, to postpone, it would need to be to postpone it for a definite period of time. So in other words, you would need to include, if you're wanting to do that for the next meeting, or some meeting in the future. And if you want that, you would, I want to be able to get that by a majority of vote. If you wanna try to do a table indefinitely that requires a two-third majority vote, then you're basically suspending the normal rules of procedure for the council. But that, that's how you handle.
So, I need to revamp my table request, that, that, to put it to a specific time, or an indefinite table?
If, if an indefinite table, the only way that would be accomplished is if two-thirds would agree with that. Otherwise, the proper motion is to postpone it to a definite period of time.
I make a motion that we postpone it indefinitely.
Did we have a motion first?
We did.
We had a motion to approve.
Right.
And so, procedurally, doesn't there have to be a lack of a second for us to be able to move on?
Well, you have two competing motions, I believe that would be, have to be decided upon by the chair. As to how to handle, you know, the first one versus, you know, the second, you have the second one with being made with the second. And the first one didn't have a.
Let's make this as confusing as we can. So I got it first, I've got a motion on the floor, is there a second to that motion? Hearing none, your, your motion is to table?
Yes.
For an indefinite period of time, but that has, you have to say?
Or, or, I, or it could be for a definite period of time, which is the appropriate motion.
Okay, but if it isn't, you have to have two-thirds for an indefinite?
That's true.
Okay, what's your pleasure?
I think that this, these tables, I mean, if, if it's an indefinite, I mean, at any time, at any future council meeting, can there not be a motion made to bring that back to the table, Robert's Rules of Order?
You can bring it back to the table, but unless it's on the agenda, you wouldn't be able to take any final action on.
Okay, so, if, if we want, if the council decides to bring it back to the, to put it back, the motion back on the table, it just needs to be addressed prior to the agenda being submitted?
Yeah, so I mean, if you. Is it prior to the agenda being submitted, or does that be done in a council meeting? Well.
Well then just follow up the next meeting after that.
Okay. You gotta give him one question at a time then.
Yeah, I guess I'll start with the indefinite, if you wanna postpone it indefinitely, you can take it off the table at any time in the future, since it's not, you're not limited to the time constraints. But you would not be able to vote on it, and it to take legal effect as an ordinance, because, unless it's been on the agenda. So, the proper practice would be, you could do that, and it would have to be postponed yet again to the next council meeting where it's on the agenda. You can't take action on anything unless it's on the agenda. When I say that, I mean, pass an ordinance, you can't pass an ordinance unless it's.
So I can, I can, I can revamp my motion to table for one year?
That's, that would be a definite time, so.
I would make a motion that we table this for one more, to see what the economy of this country, and the economy of Fairfield, how that plays out, I mean, we're five dollar diesel fuel, we're four dollars and twenty-two cents fuel, inflation is nearing double digits. There is a TIP district available for the downtown, so I would make a motion that we table it for one year.
Alright, I, I.
I second that.
Okay, I, I feel important before we, we vote on that, which, if it's a definite period of time, then it's only a majority, correct?
That's correct.
Alright, I make, I wanna make sure you understand, the city council spent twenty thousand dollars on, on this effort with Moran Economic Development. You did a public hearing, and that public hearing is only good after doing newspaper advertising, legal advertising, everything that we did, for three months after the public hearing. If, if this isn't voted on within three months of the public hearing, then we have to go through the entire process again, and spend, spend that money again. So I just wanna make sure everybody understands that before we vote. So, there's a motion on the floor to, to table this for one year, and there's a second, and that means we'll have a roll call vote with a majority ruling on that motion, okay?
Okay, I have a motion by Alderman Moore, seconded by Alderman Eccleberry to table the approval of the business district for a period of one year. Roll call vote, Atterbury.
Can I ask the question? Okay, so what happens if, if his motion does not get passed to table for a year? Can we bring up another motion to have, have some kind of definite timeline that's not a year away, that is not spending forty thousand dollars for the price of twenty, you know?
Yes, I believe.
Yes.
So, no?
Eccleberry.
Yes.
Lampley.
No.
Lizzenby.
Yes.
McGill is absent. Moore.
Yes.
Reaver.
No.
Stahl.
No.
Okay.
So that failed.
Alright, so we have a fail, I'd entertain another motion.
I'd like to make the motion to vote on this again within ninety days of the public hearing. That should be sufficient time to get more information out than I'd put it, waste a bunch of money on it.
Okay, so, the motion is that we would do that within ninety days?
Of the public hearing.
Of the public hearing, which was, remember the date? So, pardon?
March eighth.
March eighth? Okay, so. In, in June, we'd have to, we'd have to nail down that date to make sure it was in the ninety days. But, as long as it's done, your motion is as long as it's done within the ninety days. Okay, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
I have a motion by Alderman Atterbury, seconded by Alderman Reaver to approve postponing the business district vote for a period of ninety days between the public hearing and the time to be placed, placed on the council vote agenda, or agenda for a council vote. Okay, is, let me see.
It'd have to go down to Eccleberry.
Roll call vote, Eccleberry.
No.
Lampley.
Yes.
Lizzenby.
No.
McGill is absent, still. Moore.
No.
Reaver.
Yes.
Stahl.
Yes.
Atterbury.
Yes.
That motion passes.
Passes. Okay, so we will, we will set a date in June to make sure that within the ninety days to vote on the issue that doesn't seem to wanna go away. So we'll do that in ninety days. Having, moving on to agenda item three, ordinance to approve equipment sale to Wayne White. This is, I believe, we're getting close to the end of the, the sale of our electric equipment. This is tools and excess inventory of power lines and wires and all kinds of things like that. Value, we have a third party that looks. Uh, value, we have a third party that, uh, looks at the value of the equipment that's owned by the, uh, city, and then we both agree on what that price is. Uh, this particular sale to Wayne White is, uh, in excess of sixty-six thousand four hundred dollars. Do I hear a motion, uh, on this ordinance?
Let me make a motion.
Second.
I have a motion by Alderman Lampley, seconded by Alderman Reaver, to approve the ordinance to sell equipment to Wayne White Electric. Roll call vote, Lampley?
Yes.
Lizzenby?
Yes.
McGill is absent, Moore?
Abstained.
Reaver?
Yes.
Stall?
Yes.
Atterbury?
Yes.
Eccleberry?
Yes.
Okay. Six, four, one extension. Um, that gets us to agenda item five. Uh, this is an agreement, an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Fairfield and, uh, Strasburg, the fire protection district there. Chief Miller, uh, and, uh, the city have secured through, uh, grant money, grant monies, uh, new air packs that will, uh, that our firemen use, uh, when going into a, a fire. And so we have, um, slightly used ones, uh, that, uh, Strasburg would find, uh, very durable, and that we no longer need. And so we worked out a very, um, favorable deal of, uh, one hundred dollars per air pack to them. Six, chief, is that what?
Uh, last discussion was around ten.
Around ten, okay. So, um, what, what's your pleasure as far as us, uh, selling these air packs to, uh, the fire protection district in Strasburg?
Make the motion. I'd second that.
I have a motion by Alderman Reaver, seconded by Alderman Lampley, to approve the agreement with Strasburg Fire Protection District for the sale of air packs. Roll call vote, Lizzenby?
Yes.
McGill is absent, Moore?
Yes.
Reaver?
Yes.
Stall?
Yes.
Atterbury?
Yes.
Eccleberry?
Yes.
Lampley?
Yes.
And that passes. In the mayor's report.
What about four?
I'm sorry, did I miss one?
Fireworks.
Ah, I'm sorry, it's not on mine. I don't have the revisal, do I? Okay, I'm sorry. Oh, I missed four. Okay. Um, so after last meeting, we talked to our new fireworks company, and, um, they, uh, they said there's an, uh, I know this is, uh, remarkable, but a lot of people like to watch the fireworks on the Fourth of July. So what happened was, uh, they suggested, since that's a Monday night, and since the kids won't be going to school on Monday, uh, why not do it on the night, Sunday night, uh, July third? And so we, we thought that would be, uh, acceptable, and that's, that's what we're proposing to do. This is now a, uh, to be able to get the same show, uh, about a fifteen thousand dollar fireworks show, but of course, from last meeting, you understand that we're using some money from the recreation money from the hotel motel tax, as well as Libby's going to, no pressure, Libby, she's going to go out and find, uh, some, uh, some corporate sponsorships, uh, starting tomorrow. Uh, so, uh, I, I, I just want to make sure everybody's okay that we need, I mean, if someone has an objection to that, please let me know, otherwise it was just an information item, okay? Okay, all right. Now we'll get to the minutes report. Bidding process has ended, um, with a new hire at the water treatment plant. He is thirty-one-year-old Jonathan Fuller of Mount Vernon. He currently works at the Mount Vernon Sewer Department, where he has served since July twenty-twenty-one. He's a graduate of Wayne City High School and Green Lake College, and he starts on April fourth, and he understands that he must move into the area. We are scheduling an April seventh special meeting of the city council to deal with personnel matters. That meeting will be called, uh, to order, and then retreat into closed session. May twenty-first is the, uh, test date for the next police eligibility, uh, list. Uh, we have exhausted the current list. It was a busy municipal court docket this afternoon with thirteen cases. Two citations for unkept properties were continued until May twenty-fourth. Two citations continued until, uh, April twenty-sixth. Two residents were fined for inoperable vehicles and paid seventy-five dollar fines. Uh, there were two nuisance, nuisance private properties who paid their fines prior to court. Two more properties were found guilty but not fined because of, uh, compliance. Two properties were cited for two hundred and fifty dollars each in fines and court costs. And finally, one person was fined one hundred and seventy-five dollars for an inoperable motor vehicle. I, I want to point out, and, and Tina and I are going to talk tomorrow, uh, I, I've been getting a little, uh, some guff on social media, I do quite regularly, but, uh, mostly on this, um, there are some people that, and, and I even had a few of our police officers mention this today, they want to know who they are, okay? They want to know the addresses, they want to know, you know, they want, the police want people to know that they're doing the job. And the people that, uh, you know, co- complained to me, want to know that we're doing something about the complaints in their neighborhood. So Tina and I are going to work, I don't think that's something that I want to put on social media, uh, you know, Fred Smith on Ninth Street's got a junk car, I, I, I don't think I want to do that. But I do think it probably needs to be somewhere, it, our, a municipal court is not covered by the media, so I mean, that would have been the easy way out. Uh, but we're going to talk and see if there's a way we can find a way on the, on the, on the webpage that we can point people to when they ask the question. So I just thought I'd mention that. Contract talks continue with the IDEW, uh, with our next scheduled session on Thursday morning. And, uh, the USDA NRCS reports that they are close to submitting a preliminary investigation feasibility report, or a PIFR, as they call it, on flooding problems along Johnson Creek in Fairfield. Their early data indicates that fifty-five percent of the watershed, that is the Johnson Creek, uh, watershed, is residential property, or about thirty-two hundred acres. So it's, it's a massive watershed, and so, and that only helps us as we try to get grant monies to solve the problem. Any questions about the mayor's report that I might be able to further answer? Then it's time for Miss Laney's time.
I'd like to take a little bit of time on the Miss Laney's to kind of explain my position on, on the sales tax. Uh, number one, I, I hope nobody out there feels that I am against Fairfield businesses, because I'll support it any way I can. Some of the questions and some of the concerns that I have is that we are now going to take a business tax district and lay it right over the top just about at the TIF. You know, the TIF funds are available, I mean, the talk is to revitalize the downtown area. TIF is there for that. You know, since I've been on the council, I've probably had less than six businesses come, uh, to TIF to ask for funds. Uh, you know, the TIF fund can, can demolish buildings, the TIF fund can buy property. Uh, you know, it might not be able to put in a, uh, an air conditioner or something like that, but, you know, in, in my business that I ran, I run, I've got about twenty-five hundred customers, and they're about three-quarter, two-thirds of people are talking about outside the city limits. You know, my customers don't feel that it's fair that I have to collect a one percent tax to fix Sean Rush's building. Sean Rush's build, people don't think that it's fair that he has to collect it to fix my building. That falls on the business owner, the business manager, to be able to budget and, and make adjustments. And it's just not the right time, in my opinion. I mean, inflation is terrible, and, and, yeah, we spent twenty thousand dollars, but maybe we put the cart before the horse. Maybe we should have had the public hearing first and got some input. Today, I mean, we're, we've been asked to, to vote on this before the, the ninety days are out. We don't, we don't know what it's to do for, who's going to control it, how it gets distributed, but, and, and don't take this the wrong way, but it's almost like Obamacare. Let's pass it, and we'll figure out what's in it later. Use, uh, I mean, anybody ought to be want to know how, why, and whatnot. And I encourage every downtown business to come to TIF. I sit on the TIF committee. I'm not, i- i- if it's within the guidelines, I'm, we're going to do everything we can to, to beautify downtown. And, and again, I mean, I'm not against any downtown business, I'm for Fairfield. I mean, I grew up here, my kids are here, my grandkids are here, and I wanted to stay here. But right now is just not the time to put an additional one percent. And, and for, for the, for the dress, it, it's not that much. But, you know, if it, if it's my customers that I'm having to charge an extra ten or fifteen dollars on a load of propane, and I'm doing that, you know, I'm delivering forty or fifty deliveries a day, but that becomes an issue, you know? And, and, and another example is, if, if Gary Moore wants to build a two-hundred-thousand-dollar home in the city of Fairfield, and I want to buy everything local, do you think that Gary Moore wants to go to Kincaid's across the street and pay the additional one percent? Or does Gary Moore want to go to the Kincaid's at Wayne City and not have to pay that, and put that money in Gary Moore's pocket? It's the same way with auto parts. You've got NAPA auto parts in Fairfield, you've got NAPA auto parts in Wayne City. Gary Carter made, you know, I, I mean, we're not any business, and we're not any Fairfield. I, I mean, we're, any vote that I put out there is for the betterment of Fairfield. It might not seem it, but just right now is not the ti- is not the time to overlay a current TIF district. If the TIF district wasn't there, I would support it one hundred percent. You know, and if the TIF, if the TIF district goes away, I'll support it one hundred percent. And as far as questions, I don't know, that's not up to me, because the public comments are open, but I'll be more than happy to answer anything after we're done.
Right, I, I really don't think we need to get into a, a give and take right now, everybody had their, their say. As far as the, the, the way that, I, I feel like I have to say a couple things, and I, I don't really want to get into an argument with you, uh, Alderman, about this matter. But I, I do believe that, um, we're pretty clear about how we wanted to, to go forward with a business committee, and the business committee, uh, they make, make the recommendations to the city council. Uh, ultimately, we had, uh, if we would have voted tonight, we would have had three months of the city council deciding ex- the exact structure of how this was going to work, wi- with that loose, uh, idea that we're going to start with the people in the business district. Um, I, I think there's, I, I think almost any time in our history, we're going to be able to say the economy's not real good, we probably, probably shouldn't do this. Uh, I, I personally think that this was, and still is, a great opportunity to be able to invest in our business district, to be able to invest in the people, our front porch. The, the area that people drive through on Route fifteen and, and forty-five and look at, we, we, you, you say, let's come, go to TIF. If, if the money is all spent on Christmas decorations and knocking down buildings, uh, with TIF, when, and, and, and I have had people discuss the possible purchase of the AirTechs building. When they do, they're going to want to retool the AirTechs building, and it's going to take hundreds of thousands of dollars if you're going to want those jobs here. And then there won't be any money in TIF, because we're spending it on the things that the dis- business district could have, could have spent money on. So, I, we, we've kicked this now down the road for, for ninety days, and, and so, uh, this goes on, and, uh, uh, I guess I was hoping that one way or the other would be over, uh, tonight. But we'll, we will continue on, and I, I, I appreciate your thoughts, and, you know, you, you and I at times don't agree on things, and so, and this, this is one of the.
And there's nothing wrong with that, sometimes you got to agree to disagree.
Absolutely.
We, we, there shouldn't be eight yes men up here.
I'd, I'd also, I mean, I also sit on the TIF committee with Gary, I mean, there hasn't been a business that has approached us that we have turned down. I mean, we want to help as many, I mean, yeah, we're on different sides on maybe this and stuff like that, but, I mean, come to TIF, Doug, I mean, he will set you up right there, I knew he was in here. I mean, we've got TIF applications, let's, I mean, let's move Fairfield forward. With whatever we have to move Fairfield forward, let's move Fairfield forward. I mean, I mean, they did change, uh, you brought up the demolishing, that changed, uh, in the last few years, because it didn't used to, because it would bring down tax base, pandemic kind of changed a lot of things. I mean, that is something that we can look at for, I mean, there's certain buildings downtown, I won't call them out, that we know need to be torn down, and I don't know that we'll ever get them to do it themselves. So, come to us for TIF, you know, whatever happens with everything else, it happens, and we will, we're all up here. I mean, none of us are up here and not want the better for Fairfield, and all of us are friends, and, and, you know, we're going to disagree at times, but I think there are still tools available for this town to move forward.
Amen.
Any other comments by Alderman? Then I'd, uh.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
We got a second on that, let's vote, let's vote with your feet, thank you very much. Thank you for being here this evening, by the way.